Educating, informing, serving. TV, keeping government honest.
We'll move to adjustments to the agenda. I think we need to have an adjustment for reorganization of the board. And we can do that.
So move. Move for the agenda to reorganize the select board itself. Motion is made and seconded for adjustment to the agenda to reorganize the board. We will for discussion where we want to do that for acceptance of minutes or after. Adjustment to the agenda. Moving forward. Motion is made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Both. Motion, Gary.
This time I make my motion.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
On other part of the organization, reorganization of the board for 2023, Westminster Select Board, I move that Katrina Hamilton be chair for the year 2023 for the select. Yes. Thank you, ma'am. No, can't take me anywhere. It's your, well, six years.
I'll second. Motion is made and seconded to nominate Katrina Hamilton as select board chair for 2023, 2024. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Both.
I second that.
Motion is made and seconded. Well, actually, it's your meeting now.
That's right. So I'll make the motion. No, it's your meeting now. Madam Chair, I'll make the motion.
I'm out of here.
And thank you very much. I make the motion that Stephen Major be the vice chair of the Westminster Select Board for the 2023, 2024 year.
Call set.
Motion has been made and seconded to nominate Katrina as vice chair for 2023, 2024. For 2024 year. Any discussion? All right. The nine.
All those in favor?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
At this point, I move that our esteemed former chair, Jason Perry, and our new, actually, actually, we, it's not here though. I actually do, I want to nominate Dan Crocker as the clerk for the 2023, 2024.
Second that.
You got out of that one. I never got out of that.
To nominate Dan Crocker as select board chair.
Jason. You don't get a choice to do that here. You don't. I had to do it.
I was here, I didn't have a choice. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None. Acceptance of the minutes.
Katrina, so.
Yep, you keep me in line.
To another, because of the agenda. I would like to have a place on this meeting, probably under new business, where we acknowledge the generosity of the town meeting and the tasks they have to be. Including the money they gave us.
I second that.
There are, it's important to.
Second.
So under six, six C D, or six C one. I just.
Not E.
Oh, yeah, well, it depends if you're going to executive session or not.
E, so new business, but D already, C one would be something to do with the road, I guess.
Uh. Yearly plan from town meeting.
No, you're fine. Have at it. So you made a motion?
I second.
To the agenda to add line item six E yearly plan from town. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
None? Acceptance of the minutes for during second, twenty four.
I move the minutes as seconded.
Question?
You would have to. I would have seen this somewhere. Or it's not here.
Did I sign them?
Yeah, but those are the minutes when he was arguing.
Oh. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Communications and public comments.
This is what, if you ever get to say it, this is what you expect.
Yeah, I've been told by several people in town, there's one gentleman that keeps complaining about my yard. He has, he has called the.
Just state your name.
Just state your name.
What's the raptor? Sorry. Um, he's complained about my dogs, he's had the sheriff sat in my house, he complained about my thing, I gave it to a neighbor. He's complained about my grandchildren, now he's complaining about my dog, uh, my yard. I plan on putting a fence up at one end of my yard this summer when it's feasible weather. I have moved some stuff around, my truck broke down, so I couldn't move stuff out. I've done it for years. It's not that I'm trying to aggravate anybody, it's not that I'm trying to be a bother. I've actually helped people, people came and got stuff that they needed. Um, you know, I didn't think I was that much of an issue. I don't go to meetings, I don't complain, I don't bother anybody, so I don't know what the gentleman's issue is, but I just came to let you know that I do have plans of doing something different, it's just gonna take time. And the other neighbor, um, when my police came to my house several times, they keep saying that the properties are joint, they're not. That's a different property, but because he's complaining about my properties, complaining about that property, and it's just, it's borderline harassment now. I just, I don't know how to get rid of the issue. Um, but I am planning on putting up a small fence on one end. I don't want to enclose my whole yard because I have grandchildren that live here. They feel they should be able to walk down the road to the pool or see the neighbors go by and wave when Russell or Peg or somebody else goes by or see the town trucks working and enjoy that. Um, I have to say that town crew has helped me out a lot and I've done my best for everybody else, so it's, you know, it's just too bad it has to come down to this.
I think his biggest complaint is that it feels like it's a junkyard and according to the ordinance for the town and the state as well, anywhere that collects stuff.
Yeah.
Is all, regardless of how big it is, does fall apart.
Right.
And there is a permitting process. Um, I don't know if the sheriff informed you of what the process was.
No, he just told me I needed to put up a fence or something. He was decent, but, um, it's not, it's not just because I have a lot there, it's because every time he goes by, there's pictures being taken of my house and everything else. It's just, he told me once he stopped, um, at the beginning of last summer, and my dogs were on a chain, and they stopped, and I was there and a friend of mine from Delaware followed, and he says to me, I hope these dogs aren't getting abused like the last ones who know they're not here because they were in a cage, which they were in a big enough cage, they had dog houses to hang food, water. Um, but I hope you're gonna take care of these better and lock them and take them for a ride, blah, 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 and I looked at him and I was like, have a wonderful day, and I smiled, and he got mad, and then he started calling. You know, I mean, I can name ten places right now that have metal in the yard and cars, and I can give names and I can give addresses and I can just hurt everybody that I know, but why am I gonna do that? You know? So I am gonna put up a fence, and I moved a bunch of stuff around yesterday, some of it's not even metal, it's stuff that I use or the kitchen, so I don't know. But I just wanted to let you guys know, I'm working on it. I don't feel I need a junkyard license because I'm not buying stuff and I'm not selling this stuff.
It just has to be a place where it collects, if not, it's not fully, it's how, how it's worked.
Yeah.
And I am trying to get more certification, so I'm not gonna make any recommendations for how to move forward until I have that certification.
Yeah.
I think if it continues on your end, if Paul keeps coming to us, I feel like we should take our ordinance, give it to Larry, who are our attorney, go over the ordinance, get a legal opinion on it, and then look at the property, look, does this meet that ordinance?
Oh, yeah, there's metal there.
If in his opinion it says it doesn't, this is a dead point for our.
Yeah, there's metal there, so it wouldn't meet.
There's metal at my house.
There would, well, no.
There's metal at everybody's house.
The last, the last, um.
Now, I don't want you to think I'm like against.
No.
That's not what I mean at all, I just want a legal opinion to know.
Yeah, the last town manager that was here, he's like, just put it in the bushes, so that's what I did. I had a bunch more than what I have now, what I had in the bushes, so they couldn't do anything.
It's taking the pictures and like that, that is, that is harassment for our attorney. That takes a little too far. I didn't know that, I swear to God.
Well, that's because I don't complain, I don't go around telling everybody everything, you know, I try to stay myself, but I'm just, I just get to a point where I want to turn my hands up here, and it's like somebody came to me and they said, he's trying to get you out of town. Well, that's been my family's problem for years, I'm not going anywhere, I have nowhere to go.
Nobody can force.
So I just, you know, but I am gonna work on it, I don't want everybody to have to deal with my issue with him. Um, my kids, when my grandkids, he accused them of riding four-wheelers a lot, you can love them, you can have a four-wheeler until they get older, and then he had a little tiny one, and he said, oh, they're up there riding four-wheelers and tearing up my property. They never rode a private property, they rode from their house to my house, that's it. So it's just, I don't know why he doesn't like me, he doesn't like me, something like that. It is what it is, I'll deal with it. I'll deal with it. Yeah, I, but there's not really, it's not you guys' problem, it's mine, so I'll deal with it, but I just wanted to let you know I am gonna be working on putting up a fence and stuff, I'm just not gonna do my whole yard, I'm not gonna fence everything. It looks trashy because there's toys all over it and everything, but whatever.
Then I've insulted Melissa's defense. When I decided to sell my property.
Thank you.
There was all kinds of metal and things out back, my husband saying he used it, you know, for this and that and the other, just like everybody else, but I had to get rid of it, afforded it to the relatives. So Melissa came down, was very good, she's always been very good, and I helped her. I know you're not wrong. And she said, and I won't charge you. And she doesn't, and that's why she's in the predicament she is now. She's helped so many people and she's never received any compensation for it. And we can't deal with that at every step. And if she needs a permit, that's fine, we'll get her a permit. If she needs a fence, we'll get her a fence. But this gentleman is sort of setting up a precedent, I could see. If they could make her stop, there's other places in this town that are terrible. So we're just gonna walk in and bother all these people? I don't like what they do, so I just, you know, get the plane, there goes, you know, whatever values. I came here sixty-two years ago from Delaware. It was a shock of a life. First.
Good or bad?
It was good. My husband had lived, lived in this house until he died, yes, until dying there, for eighty-five years. And, uh, I've been, I was there sixty-two. So, so when Lynn Blue, when we first got this place, the back door opened, went out to which she had, you know, that everything. So we worked to get it better, but we always had good jobs, so we had the one to do this. Whereas Melissa's working with you and everything. I think she's a good person, I think she deserves her chance. Their business up there. I know I wouldn't know whether to do all this stuff. Even though I don't have much of a capital. So I would really like you to take it into, you know, that she's a good person, she's trying, has grandchildren and are going to our school, one will go, they're good students, she's amazing. So you gotta take all this into consideration. I know you will. Didn't leave any metal.
Not much, but I'm gonna pass with my tires, I do. So we're just gonna wait for our station.
I think we should send the ordinance to Larry and have him look at the property and see where exactly he's at. Agreed. What about other properties in town? Unless, unless, unless somebody's complaining about other properties, I guess I don't, I don't think we go looking for problems. Right now, we have somebody complaining about this one, so we deal with what's we have to find. Just buy it.
I agree, there's no reason to get other people upset in the same situation.
We may find out we don't really have any problems. Yeah, it is. Thank you very much. We also may find out we do, but at least we'll know.
Right.
Thank you very much for coming and expressing these intentions of providing these facts and observations. Very important that we have everyone's side.
I don't know, I commit this to Melissa, since she was a child.
Thank you for coming.
I second what she said.
All right, any more communications and public comments?
Yeah, just quickly, Madam Chair, I want to welcome Stephen Major and Dan Crocker to the board. Welcome forward to, and since everyone seems like that we're here the last time, I just for humility, I just would allude to section four of the minutes that you also have, where we thank Craig Allen, Nathan DeGale, and Jason Perry, didn't destroy me the job, that's fair, Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Paul Joyce would be your right. I got some issues on the front.
Is that, is that how you refer to you as Madam Chair, this is his chair, how do you want to do it?
Is that your sheet down on more pro pro?
I just, I didn't know.
All right, moving on to unfinished business. Personnel policy now, Paul. So I'm going to table that, Bill Muir at BLCT, on, about, or about, for Paul, Paul
Sorry, presenting, she wishes to come to a meeting, discuss with us.
Well, we have, he is available on sixteen, if anybody wants to discuss it, or she's trying to do that number five. The person on sixteen, I don't really want to.
I believe that it's sixteen, March?
Paul's gonna.
March, March sixteen.
Yes, Pauline?
Can't hear you. She's muted, is she muted?
Pauline, unmute yourself.
Okay, I just did, um, we can hear everyone, well, I can, I can hear everyone but Katrina. Is there a mic that's closer to her?
I can move.
Also, could the host let Sarah Waldo in? She's trying to log into the meeting.
Yep.
Do you want to push places with me so you're closer to it? Try it, too.
So, okay. Can you hear her though? Can you hear me now, Pauline? All right, so personnel policy, do.
We'll just table it.
We'll just.
We'll table it, I think we should table it until you get that information, but we've tabled it like five times.
Right, I know, so the question is, is because the next select board meeting will be after that, do either of you want to participate? It's not a requirement, it's just, she offered it up, so.
I'm sorry, who is she?
Jill Muir is, I don't know her, she's HR, she's like the HR specialist at BLCT.
Okay, and she wants to help us rewrite our personnel policy?
Not necessarily rewrite it, I had reached out to them to make sure that the, our sick leave compensation was what it should be per her mom law, because they changed it a couple of years ago. And so she got the policy and she has some recommendations and suggestions, so.
Can she do that within the format of a regular meeting, knowing that she doesn't have a whole meeting, just she has a.
Maybe.
Fragment of it?
They've been asked.
And she could come on Zoom for that to, to get us all here and not create an additional meeting?
Okay, I will ask, I'm okay with that. We don't need a motion for that, do we?
As Chair, you're setting the agenda for the next meeting.
All right, thanks. All right, moving on to the ARPA scoring sheet approval.
Always skimpy.
Oh, wait, skimpy? Oh, the five-year capital plan. All right, so we should make a list of things that we should put on our five-year capital plan that we need to be thinking about and addressing. Yes, Alan?
I put a list of ideas.
Oh, you did?
In your packet. Um, it's just stuff that I, off the fly, I did not add the, the garage, because I don't know, I know he's got heat coming in, but I don't know what else you're gonna do to help that building, so Chuck might want to do a list of his own for the five-year capital plan.
Is this something that we would want to form, some type of loose committee for each one, two or three people to just visit, make a list, figure out what we need, what wants, needs, whatever, or try to work it as a, as a whole? Seems like it'd be a lot of work as a whole if we broke it down a little bit.
The.
Any ideas?
Oh, I would think, just specifically the town garage, big enchilada, in terms of, you know, what a big piece is, what's something that you really have to plan out over multiple years. Um, and then that would apply also for the town, it's expensive equipment, or anticipates replacing expensive equipment over time, really great to get a good heads up about what, what that is, what money is saved for, or what we might continue, how we might borrow or purchase such equipment. And so clearly the town garage and road facilities are a really big part of that, and then some pieces are really small, uh, porch repair somewhere, that would be nice to have, but might not be a five-year plan, it might be something we want to do in, in any given year with available funds. So some of these are, are really quite small, and, um, uh, some of them are massive things that we, we need, really, really need to have a, a plan that we might be presenting to next year's town meeting and that sort of thing, or might even be going out for bond for. So there seems to be a, in this list here, a differentiation between, um, big ones that will be multiple years and, um, smaller ones that we need to do, but maybe just need to do this year. Um, and so they become not really a five-year capital plan, but a, let's check the cupola this year, and then, you know, see what needs doing with it. So difference between maintenance and, and big capital stuff.
And I think adding to that list, we should have purpose for some of these buildings, because some of them are just sitting there and falling apart, and they should have a purpose.
Well, that's why I was thinking.
Or hit the real estate market.
That's right.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, it's an unpopular opinion, but, yeah.
If, if, if we did that, that would be, that would be simply a, how do we, that, that would then move something like, um, a Westminster West Town Hall from a, let's paint it this year, to what do we do with it on the long term, and move it back into this, you know, capital plan spot, but if it's a, do we need to place some clavards on it? Well, we just do that, we don't want to.
Right.
Even if we were to sell eventually, we don't want anything to decay. And so I think this list, and thank you, I like for that, but it seems to be, uh, in two categories, from the great big ones to the little tiny ones.
Just trying to make a list to get things moving.
Yes, no, no.
Thank you, Alan.
I think very much. I think we need to, if, if we, if we have this as a, a discussion action on now, we might just write down the great big ones, and then the other ones are maintenance items that we, that we do, that we might wish to have a town manager to help us organize, but it'd be town maintenance stuff.
In the, in the two years I've been here, we've talked five-year capital plan multiple times, this is the first time it's been put on paper.
Mm-hmm.
So this is just the fled, just the very beginning of where we're gonna move with it.
This was nice to get on paper and see it. In my business, I have a building and grounds expense, and then I have capital, which is something I'll depreciate over time, which is the big one. So this looks like a lot of its expenses, some of it, and I agree with Stephen, we need to break that out, figure out what the big ones are and what the little ones, because the little ones we now are just doing, that's an expense, you just do it, comes off this year, the bigger things come off, that's, that's capital for this. So a capital plan, you know, should be a, this is an expense, a building grounds expense that you just do, and then the capital, and of course, you have to figure out what the cost is, you know, where, there is a breakdown at some point where it's building grounds, you expense it in one year, it's capital, it goes over. The other issue that I haven't heard is, you know, I remember last year's town meeting outside, Chuck got up and said something about the town garage, and I, you know, that to me is like, that's capital plan, and that needs to be addressed. I think the facility, what I saw, is pretty decrepit and behind, and I think that's where we need to be focusing some of our, our energy on that, seeing, Chuck's already done a ton of work, I think we need to get going on that, because that's just gonna be one of those things, you kick it down the road, it's gonna cost us a whole lot more of it. And as I've always said, it's hard to do things upfront sometimes, but it's harder to wait and really get hit, so.
Yes, Stephen?
I was just thinking, maybe we ought to break this down between those categories, those two categories that you mentioned, between things that are over $20,000 and things that are under, some, some breakdown.
Yeah, maybe $10,000.
Whatever, you know, so, so we, so we can at least sort them, and then we have a relatively small list of very important things that we. that we wanna figure out what we're doing, whether we're going to taxpayers for authorization to do them.
Do we have a, something in the budget for maintenance of the building, like yearly? And that, that's what most of these should be coming out of. And then the capital stuff is something we need to what?
I don't believe that the Northwestmen... I might be wrong, but like the Northwestminster Town Hall, that is not included in building maintenance stuff. Building maintenance was mostly focused on this building. I mean, I don't know, that was just my impression, and maybe it's just because it gets...
There's a thousand dollars in the budget for West West, for the West West Town Hall, there's a thousand dollars in the budget for that one.
What about the covering?
And north?
Nothing.
Just something there.
We did what, windows and some roofs?
You did, windows.
But that was a separate...
And fixed the foundation.
This is, this is...
This is Northwestminster.
Oh, sorry, Chuck.
So I met with an insulation guy once for Craig in the Northwestminster Community Hall. Because they were looking for, you know, what that was gonna cost. And so they must have had money. They, us, we had money in there at some point to do that. So I don't know where that's at, or when it's earmarked for, or whatever. But then I never got the total of it, but I'm sure it wasn't cheap to do blown-in insulation in that entire building.
Right.
So, you know, there should be...
I feel like the town garage should really be separated from this, as far as... If we're gonna put money into something, I'm just gonna use a heating system as an example. That heating system that we have, I'm assuming we've got coming, can be picked up and moved to a new building. Much of that building, I feel like you're just throwing money at it, and you're not gonna get it back. So we either gotta commit to doing something with the building we got, or we really gotta look at, like you said, coming to the voters at town meeting with a proposal, which we were, when I say we, as a group, we're going that direction and then it kinda stopped. But I just hate to keep dumping money and dumping money into something that is just not adequate now, and it's not gonna be adequate in five years, and it's definitely not gonna be adequate
I agree.
Past that. So when I mean separate, I mean it's not like maintenance stuff. You handle the maintenance stuff, you get it, keep it as best you can. That's gonna be a large project. I look at that as a large project and it... But it's a large project that we need. It's not something, it's not really a want, it's a need, it's a...
Realistically, even if we commit, right now, tonight, we say we're gonna build a new town garage, you're talking five years before that's really gonna happen.
Five-year plan.
Right, so that's what I'm saying.
We need to actually start it.
But that's what I'm saying, though. So we gotta continue to do what we gotta do and utilize the building.
You mean?
We should, well, we should.
It's a fine line between...
It's a surplus now.
It's a fine line between, take an old building, and I did this for years at my old sugar house, before I built a new one, is putting, doing what you need to keep it running, but don't overload it and throw your money away down the money pit. So that's a hard, it's a balancing act. And I think, you know, we have to have a plan to balance our act and move forward. And it's gonna take five years, we need to get on it and start seriously doing this. This is a serious project that needs to be done.
Yes, Steven?
I just, perhaps, lengthen closure to this. I think we ought to have a five-year plan that would include items for town garages, the town equipment, and all three town halls, as they are the real estate that we owned, and thus the most expensive bits. And then we can perhaps break those down somewhat. And post office. So the post office is real estate too. And so real estate is expensive, and all of those could be in a five-year plan. And maybe the post office is jolly and we don't need to do much to it, maybe. And so it doesn't have a big budgetary implant, but certainly each of the structures we own, including the garage, should be part of a bit of a long-term plan. And then equipment is, because it costs so much.
Of course, we already have a capital reserve, which helps.
Yeah, and that's part of the plan, is that we have a reserve, great, and maybe that's nicely balanced and all, but that would just be in the plan, that that's all hunky-dory.
Just spelled out. Right. Where the bill is, obviously, the goal.
Yeah, yeah. So this is mostly, this is mostly a real estate issue.
I ask a question. Sorry.
Paul?
I'm not looking to start a discussion, I'm just curious, because of my time spent on the board previous years, does the community hall in Northwestminster have a public occupancy permit at this time?
I don't believe so.
Not that I'm aware of.
I don't believe...
That's all I wanted to know.
No, no water, no heat, no sewer, no, it's a shell, essentially, at this point. Can I ask Chuck a question?
Yeah.
Did you ever hear back from the state of Vermont on the piece? Nothing? Kirkets?
The last I talked to the state of Vermont, our salt shed is actually owned by the state of Vermont, and the land it's on, there's three acres there, that butt up to the interstate. And I talked to them, see if we could purchase it. And that was six months ago, and they were still working on it. So...
In a committee?
It's in a committee. It's in the committee. Yeah, exactly.
I was just curious to hear.
Yeah, that's where I left it. And I spoke to them again, and they're working on it. So I think that means this way, but, you know, maybe they'll forget about it.
They probably have.
My fear is, is that, you know, the state sells property all the time like that, so they could sell it to a developer, put solar panels in there, but they get your salt out of there. That's what they choose to do if you're not on it. So it's one of those things. I give them a break and I will continue to...
I only ask because it was kind of key to location. Ryan, maybe not. Yeah, it was close. It was pushing borders when you were looking at, for a building location, so that's the only reason why.
No, definitely. Well, we definitely should.
And we should own it.
Absolutely.
So do we want to form a subcommittee to work on this project?
I think if you break it down, it would make it a little more palatable to be able to...
Break it down between those items?
Well, between each building. Two or three people take the post office, two or three people take this, and just figure out what the needs, the wants, and the condition it's in now, and bring it back to the... Maybe not the next meeting, maybe two.
Would the committee that worked on the town garage be willing to try to do that again?
The last committee, I doubt it. They were...
I know.
It wasn't good.
I know.
All right. What do you think?
Okay, Paul, I get it.
I feel as a newsletter member, I don't know enough about the town garage, that we ought to have a meeting there, if there is a space for a meeting there, or...
I would invite, I would invite you guys to come down and take a look. Anytime that you feel you have time, you get a hold of me.
Is that okay, to go on by?
Of course it is.
He did have an open house there, a year ago. Was that about a year ago?
We did, we did, yeah. And I wouldn't do that yearly, it's just a...
Doesn't take long to see what we've got.
Well, I would invite you guys to come down and look at the facility, the equipment, and I'll show you what we're talking about with some of the things.
If one calls during the workday, if you could call the town garage number?
You can. You can call my cellphone, 802-289-3559, night or day.
We have one of that.
Seven days a week, whatever you have time.
Just he may not answer if he's busy.
No, no, I'll call you back. I call everybody back.
You're a brave man, giving that number out during mud season.
They find it one way or another. All right, so...
Table it for now, until it's ready.
Table it for the next meeting?
Get through some of this.
Have, let Steven go look at the town garage?
I guess my suggestion would be that we, we say that we that we will have a capital plan including those those items, the garages, the equipment, the three town halls, and post offices. If we just say that we're going to do that, then we can move on to selecting people to be involved in those, you know, in items there. So I guess I will make a motion that we have a five-year capital plan that will include planning for the town garage, town equipment, the three town halls, and the post office.
Seconded.
We have a motion to create a five-year capital plan to include the post office, the three town halls, and the town garage.
And the town equipment.
And the equipment for the highway department. It's been seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. All opposed? All right, moving on. ARPA scoring sheet and approval. Do you wanna speak to this a little bit, Paul? I spoke to, oh, Steven probably hasn't seen it, and probably neither has Dan. It's not in your packet, I don't think.
Thank you.
Is this something we just have him put through or are we just...
So, yes, it's here for approval. Sorry, I've given you time, but and there's like three different sections, and Paul and Jim can speak to it. I helped write it, so I'm trying not to be too involved.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
So if you have, if you have questions, I'm trying to put Paul on the spot.
I have a question.
Yes, Steven?
Who's on the committee?
Myself, as the Chair currently. Jim Matal is also on. Katrina is our clerk. Linda Fossett attends many meetings. And Chuck is also a member from the staff. Cole is, Streeter is also in. We have a guest that comes in from time to time. I'm not gonna give you her name at this point. She is in the minutes, because she hasn't actually joined. But she's been advisory to us, and she's helped us implement, or give to you to hopefully implement, or adopt, this guideline policy and application, because to be quite honest, and, you know, I'm not good at mincing words, so I'm just gonna say like this, we were criticized heavily, at least it came to our attention, through various emails to myself and through public conversations, that we were tracking, we were monopolizing the money, and favoritism towards where the monies were going, and just not going any further than that. But so in a step back, we said, okay, timeout, we're gonna change the way we do things, try to keep people a little happier. And we've been fumbling down the road a little bit up until just recently. We did take a extended winter break till the families have time for the holidays. And now since we've come back, Jim and Katrina have created this draft, which has a few changes to it this evening as well. And hopefully, we came here anticipating that you all would have seen it and had some questions, but that doesn't seem to be the case. But
just one question. And again, this is fantastic. So, and again, thank you for all the work you guys do on this and have done on it, Paul, Jim, and everybody. So just for everyone here, how does one, how would one go about submitting this, and what timeframe are we looking at?
So the hope is, from the committee, that there'd be a black and white paper available here at town hall, if you guys, they walk in, go somewhere, whether it be the tenant's window, or whatever, say, I want, like, this application for an ARPA proposal. With also the town halls help, of course, maybe a digital form. Need a PDF through email, on a website. I'm not very good at that stuff, so I'm kind of speaking out of school, but those are the two ideas that we had as far as public being able to get it in their hands.
And when could they hope for a turnaround, once you guys get a decision on their proposal?
So, yeah, maybe I should stop talking and let the author of it speak a little to it first, but proposal would be filled out. Somebody has to become a facilitator. That's pretty much the base to this, or administrator, maybe is a better word. Instead of people coming in and saying, I'd like money for a play about bees, and then just walking away and thinking that you all are gonna award the money to them just for asking. This is gonna make them responsible for how it's gonna happen, how it's gonna, you know, what money amount is being asked for. They're also maybe have to show with some transparency how they spend the money. Did they spend all the money? It has a lot of this stuff built into it. We used, they used a template from another town in Vermont to create this one and streamlined the region's words a bit, make it user-friendly. So hopefully this takes out any of the criticism and the accusations of past, and it also puts it in your laps. With the decision the committee made, my suggestion was, we don't hang on to anything. We're just advisors, we're an ad hoc committee. The money's in the general fund. The select board has all the authority to spend it on any legal expense that the town will normally, or has incurred, or anticipates occurring. The only thing that's kind of forbidden is you can't earmark the money. You can't say, in 2025, we're gonna work through this bridge, and we know that our end of it's gonna be $200,000. So today, we wanna say, we're setting aside $200,000. You can't do it. It's not advisable by anybody, or by our...
Thank you. And so somebody picks up an application, they give it to, back to town hall, it'll then go to your committee? Your committee meets how often?
Once a month.
Once a month?
Fifteen.
So, within thirty days, would you, at each meeting, when you receive a application, would you make a decision on that application?
We don't make a decision.
Would you make a decision to recommend?
We're gonna score it, and if it needs a score, the minimum score, then it's, either way, it's gonna go to the select.
Then it goes to the select board. So then we're looking at, sort of, six, eight weeks after they bring it into the town hall, that they may have a decision from the select board if we're able to make a decision at the next appropriate meeting on that. So it looks like it'd be about a a two-month turnaround between their application and their being authorized.
Yes, that's my point. Yeah, you're trying, yeah, I took that.
I just have an idea. The, no, I think it was a good point. So the timeline, it seems long, I admit, but we don't meet that often, and no one's wanting to, they don't think. But the packet you have, there's three pieces to it. And I, Paul mentioned changes, I did some cleaning up, found a lot of typos and things, those are my faults, I apologize if you wanna know. Nothing major at all, like spelling and things like that. But there's a guideline that hopefully will explain to people how it works. And one change I made is if you look at, it's called Proposed ARPA Committee Application Guidelines. On page two, item number three, committee recommends to the select board, and I'm proposing that we're gonna add to that, recommends, recommendation to the select board for that board's consideration and decision, to make it clear to the person filling this out that we can give them hugs and kisses, and that doesn't mean you're gonna give them money. That the decision happens in one place. So we wanted that to be clearer than we've had it made in the past. Then the second piece is the application itself, and it's pretty straightforward, who is it, what do they propose to do with it? But the important thing there is they've got an initial cost for the thing, and where's it gonna come from, how much is ARPA, how much is coming from somewhere else, and what is that other place? But also, if there's ongoing costs, how is all being covered? Because we don't wanna put you in the position, we can at all avoid it, of giving someone money, when in fact, it's gonna be an ongoing demand, and that's not budgeted anywhere. So they should, we want the applicant to address that.
It's a one-time show.
It's a one-time thing. So what we're saying here is, is it any ongoing maintenance or other continuing needs, what are they? And then the third thing is the scoring, and we've got... And we've got, and there were some duplications in that. That might have been confusing. I apologize for that. But we've got, looking at how is it going to contribute to community resilience, which was part of the federal, you know, in, I don't know what I want to call it. The federal reason for doing this. The second thing is what's the strategic value to the town? Does it line up with the town plan goals and what the town is trying to do? Does it have a support and demand in town? And the third thing is how feasible. I had the awkward word of the executability, which I'm not sure is even a word. So I'm going to change it. I guess we change that to feasibility, which is a little more meaningful. But there again, is it just an idea or is it something that's ready to go? How is it going to impact the town? Is it going to lower tax rates? Or is it going to raise them, et cetera? So those are the things. We would look at that, and that's in the application, not because we want the applicant to score their own proposal, but because we want them to understand what we're going to look at when we make a recommendation to you. And so then you would get the application when we're done with it. You would get the application. You would get the scoring sheet. It's how different committee members scored it, or total was. Any, there's a place on there for us to put notes above any major points that committee members saw that either they thought were boring or that influenced their, their decision making. And whether we're recommending it for approval or not, or somewhere in between.
Executability isn't a word.
Isn't a word.
It isn't a word. It's impressive.
Doesn't mean we're going to use it.
Good work, Jim. It does fit exactly the way you. Thank you so much. This is, for me, this is.
Hopefully that'll, we, we just want it to be transparent. And we want it to be able to move so that when you get it, hopefully you're getting it with some answers, not just more questions.
One of the things we expect out of it, also the committee, is that people stop having the illusion that the committee is the decider. And they have, they have absolutely had that perception probably up until right now.
Do we, I, I'm assuming in this process that after every monthly meeting, we might get a list of project or projects that you are passing to us with your score?
No, you'll get the application.
And we'll get the applications.
Not a summary list. Because you'll have, as a board, once you receive all of these, you'll have the ability to impact them. You can go back to one that you got months ago, if that's the case, in the future. Whether we approved, whether we scored it and it met the score or not, you will still have the ability to say, well, we think it's important enough to spend the money.
But we won't be getting every ARPA application as a group, as an entire group for us to, essentially, look how to spend our sort of limited resources in this regard. We'll have to make a decision as they come up. Sure. One by one or two by two, as they come. So it's, to a certain extent, it's first come, first served. If an application goes through, meets your, goes through your process, comes to us, we make a decision. And we don't know what application might be coming three months down the road. And that's.
Right, right.
So timeliness is really critical for those who want to do applications, that they should send them in.
Well, timely, it is, time has passed.
Yep.
And we do have a 2024 deadline that has to be met.
2024 to award the funds, allocate the funds, 26 to spend it. But, but those are, right. And also to be clear, it's, I think it's clear that the committee's intent that if a, if a proposal came in that's just zero, we have nothing in here that brings a bell for us, you're still going to get that with our conclusion. And you can overrule. I mean, that's, we just want people to know that that's the way it's going to go when it comes in.
They're getting their 15 minutes, so to speak.
Yeah.
And the first come, first served kind of bothers me because we might allocate funds for something that unfortunately, there's a lot of better things that come along that now we don't have funds for. Is there any way to make a deadline to these, to the locals, so that we can see them all at once? It's not first come, so hey, we've got our deadlines and then we can allocate all the ARPA deadlines.
That might speed up the bad ideas flowing in. So for, for instance, they're like, so, so the bridge on South Valley Road, okay, I put in a proposal and we got, we got payment for that bridge. The bridge needed to be replaced then. So if we didn't do it first come, first served, a project like that, and we waited until the end, we had all these issues. That bridge, we would have had to address that. And we would have had to raise that through taxation and not take care of it as it rose. And then at the end of the day, we were sitting on all this money and the best project that comes by might be an underwater basket we've in school. And we spend it, I know it sounds funny, but I'm just saying. Because now you're at the deadline and now we've got to spend it. So that's kind of, it's a catch 22.
If we get an application and we're like wishy-washy on it, say, and can we just kind of like kick it aside for a while?
We could table it.
Yeah, that's what we want to do, okay.
We can do whatever we want. Like you said, at the end.
There's going to be some no-brainer ones.
Right.
And then there's going to be somewhere, you know, so we may kick them out to the end.
And, and it's, it's hard for me to imagine how, how this is all working out. But there are having basic town functions like building a bridge that have been funded by ARPA.
Yeah.
Good. Alright.
Basically by, the town did, or I think every town in Vermont did, was when the federal government revised the rules to create what they call the standard allowance. And that allowed the municipality to pull the money into your municipal budget. And they listed three or four things that you were not allowed to spend it on. And, and Ally jumped in with on this, I get this wrong. But otherwise, the lion's share of what the town spends money on by far is eligible for ARPA funding. It still has to be reported to ARPA, what you've allocated from that part.
Every nickel.
And then when, what's spent. I think it's every three months or anything, something like that.
I got to report on them again April.
Okay, so, so yeah, you can, you can hold on it. You can say, we're going to run this one through and it would get reported as, as allocated. Or you can set it in a pile that says, we're going to wait. Because what the federal government did when they set this up was you can start on spending on day one. You've got until the end of 24 to decide, decide what you're going to spend it on and the end of 26 to actually spend it. You could wait to the end if you want to. But of course, you know, you're not suggesting that, I realize it. But you can create deadlines or you can put things in a holding pattern and say, and we might fund this, but we're going to wait and see what else comes along. That's entirely up to you.
Do you have a list of what you've already given out and what?
We didn't do anything out. You have a list.
I have a list, yeah, I know. Where is it? Somewhere in here?
No, I'm kidding.
There was the generator at the fire department. Digitized land records for the town clerks. The owls and the TVs here. And that extruder, I believe, too, to go with it.
Didn't the highway garage get a pad?
A tablet.
Tablet.
Tablets for, we keep track of road erosion inventory and covert inventory.
So where's this list?
There is a list.
Okay.
I don't, well, it's listing.
It could be, it could be generators. Ally would have a list of ARPA money stretch.
Yeah, that's all.
It's in your, you, you have a balance in your finances.
The highway department also.
Yeah, the highway department.
It's not going to tell you what was taken out. I gave you the revenue prior to it.
Funding for the bridge. They got funding for saw attachment for one of the tractors.
The tractor.
Gear for the highway, oh, not the highway, the fire department. Nine or 10 sets of turnout gear, a new washer. I think that's everything.
You just about got it covered. So I'd like to address Dan's question.
Yes, sir.
I have made three requests for the numbers that you're talking about. I wanted to see money spent, not necessarily on what. I have a running tally of that here. I wanted to see something on paper that showed me the deposits that the town got from the one. And I wanted to see the money out. I don't have that.
Yes, I gave you that.
Oh, yeah. We talked about this. I'll show you what you gave me, Dan, if you'd like to see that.
That's all I have.
I understand that. And I had that discussion with you. I'm not putting you on.
Plenum Chair, if I may, for time, given the returning back to the unfinished business on the ARPA scoring sheet approval, I'd like to revert back to the, this very fine document and motion to that the board accept the ARPA scoring sheet approval as presented and reviewed by this board, with the exception, as Jim Matta said, that he was going to add some additional comment on the committee recommendation regarding the select board, unless I mistake.
There's some typos that I'm going to fix.
Question has been made and seconded to approve the ARPA scoring sheet application with corrections. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Well, I should abstain because I helped write it, so I don't count. Alright, moving on. Town manager hiring committee.
Chris Potter got called out again this evening.
What's that?
So Chris Potter got called out again this evening. He wanted to be here. I guess he was chosen to be on the committee. But anyone else that was chosen, I don't see him either, so.
Have we advertised the position?
Yes.
Advertised as?
No.
In some form?
Not since the last one.
So is, and the position is now open? We can, we can legally advertise it now?
It was in the agenda. Alright, Stephen's talking about the manager position.
Town manager.
We're talking about a hiring committee.
Oh, well, I, I, let me see what the, I, oh, getting people on to the hiring committee?
Correct. We don't have a final number or names on that yet? I'm sorry, I'm speaking.
No, no, because you heard it back on here and I thought we were troubled with it, so take it away.
So who, who is currently on it and how many more people do need?
I don't, I don't have that list in front of me. I would say it's seven people maybe at most.
It's in your minutes.
It's in your minutes.
Yes.
Yep, so I'm on the committee. Chuck is on the committee. Ally's on the committee.
Oh, yeah.
Kelly and Colleen are on the committee, but.
I'm alternating with Kelly.
Yeah, there's, there's two of them as one.
So maybe we just approve any former member?
Chris Potter is on the committee.
Whether Greg and/or Sue Harlow would be interested in that, in that role.
And Susan Roman.
Susan Roman and Greg, right? Or maybe Susan and Greg.
So you're the only board member on?
Yes.
Only that.
What I, you were looking for like two board members.
It was one, one current member, one past member.
The board ends up being basically, all of us a member by default.
Right.
You may not be part of the committee, but it's going to go back to us, so.
So, so there's this, Chris Potter was wanting to be here?
Yes, he got called out.
But this agenda item is simply by, to approve the membership in the committee? Or is that done last time?
I believe it's.
It was done last time. It was done at the last meeting.
So membership has been determined to the committee?
The board agreed the committee would meet. Yep.
So I didn't make this agenda, so I don't really know. If, if we formed it last time, do we need? So we can just skip it?
Oh, well, I, 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 I guess I'm, I'm very eager for the board, for this committee to do its job to the extent of the basics of advertising positions. So we start getting applicants.
So the, so the committee, I think you're jumping ahead. The committee needs to meet, figure out how they want to advertise. Whether you want to do it on your own, like we did before. Do you want to use VLCT? What direction, the committee, like ARPA is like an ad hoc advisory. How do we want to go? Correct. And then I'm assuming that committee would come to us. Somebody representative would say, this is, we met. We would like to, for consideration, to go this direction. And we either go that direction or we go it to. VLCT will do the whole thing for you. They'll do the search and everything. It's just going to cost you a chunk of money. But, but it, I don't know what you're saying. So it, it costs us a chunk of money before. So I guess it's going to cost us one.
It, it strikes me as a difficult position to fill at this point.
Very.
And that we will need to cast a reasonably wide net with reasonably professional netters to, to get people, to get candidates to apply. And so if, if the goal is to get to a good town manager person, then it's, it will need the candidates. And candidates are, is the probably sticking point. The committee has to do a clear job of describing the position and all that in order to do the hiring. I am concerned that we move on those steps to, to, for the committee to meet, I guess, and to decide which way it's going and all that.
Yes, Jason.
If the committee's already been approved at the last meeting, then that's up to the committee to set a time to meet. Am I wrong?
You're not wrong. But in the, one of the problems, I understand that you'd want to spread a wide net. I understand that very, very much. But this is a small town. It's got a small budget compared to most. And where's someone going to live?
I, you know.
But that's, that, that was brought up at the last meeting, Stephen.
Yep, yep.
Is, yes, it would be awesome to send it out there and someone from New Jersey comes up here and they're, they're amazing. Where are we going to put them?
All of that has, but basically, the, the, wider the net, the more likely we are to, to stumble across that fish. That is, you know, some reason, you know, a spouse works low, you know, in Keene State College or something. Some, some other, it's going to take a fairly wide net to find that person who can locate to this area or is already here. And, and is, is happy to take a job because they, we've spread the net wide enough to find somebody who wants to be here. Because we're not paying them tons to move. So it does, I just think the advertising or the process needs to, to move along.
I sent the, just for your information, I sent the last ad that we had put out to the committee. I got, thanks, Ally. And Chris Potter actually rewrote the whole thing. It's a two-page thing, a two-page deal. He seems pretty excited to be doing this.
Correct, alright. Well, maybe.
We just have to get, I just thought, just thought he got a little, a little wordy with his ad.
Does the committee have any timeline they're working with?
We need to establish one.
Yeah, that's what I'm getting at. It's like if we don't establish some kind of timeline, we could be going on for years.
The committee should probably meet next week.
Yeah, so they haven't even met.
And, right.
Because it was pushed back because of town meeting. You were supposed to get all you folks on board, the new folks on board.
I think we need to like say, hey, we need to have this done at a certain time so that people have focus and get things done.
I was also asked to reach out to Larry and I did. And he has not answered the email.
So what was, what was that?
Because they wanted, I thought they would run the meetings as you would, any meeting. You'd have someone taking minutes. It would be advertised that we're having this meeting.
Should be.
And anyone could attend that would like to. I just thought it was basic, a basic follow-up.
Warning, a meeting.
Right, right. But they, I was asked to reach out to Larry to see if he would like to come to the first meeting, yet to be determined. Or are we just going to follow the basic select board meeting?
Open meeting.
So.
Right, nothing. I get nothing.
I have reached out to VLCT about the hiring process again. So, but again, I'm still waiting for a better response than what I got the first time. So they're on vacation. So next week I'll have more info. So I'll bring that to the committee meeting. So, yes, Colleen?
I'm mute. She has to do it.
Yeah, I'm mute.
Thank you. It's what I know in the, the school world. There's the New England Association of Schools and Colleges. Do we have a broader base than the, than the VLCT? Do we have a New England or beyond avenue for getting? Do we have a New England or beyond avenue for getting, getting the word out and getting candidates?
Each state has their own VLCT, similar thing. New Hampshire has the Municipal Resource Institute.
So, it's municipal? I can't hear you. Can't hear you.
No, Katrina, we can't hear you.
So, VLCT shares with other states.
Okay.
They have their own thing that's similar to VLCT, like New Hampshire has the Municipal Resource, I think it's the institute or something like that. And New York has their own thing, and Massachusetts has their own thing, and you can go on to VLCT right now and look for a town manager position in Maine if you want. So, they do share, so it can go broader. You might have to specify that you want it to go broader than just Vermont.
I think we should be putting in Keene Sentinel all that.
Oh, yeah, yeah, paper record. Yes, Chuck?
I just feel the conversation is...
Repeat.
Well, it's for the meeting. It's for the committee. And if we're going to, I didn't know I was officially on the committee until right now. So, which is great, but I feel like we should, right now, figure out when this committee's going to meet. And then tell everybody else, whether it's going to be on Monday at 1:30 in the afternoon or...
That was the thing, it was not going to be held at night, it was going to be during the day.
Right.
Right, that was one thing we had decided on.
It's in the minute.
It's in the minute, so.
Which is...
If you want it to be free and a date, I can email everybody.
At expensive time commitment.
Yes, with it, yes.
Does first thing in the morning work for you and you?
Doesn't.
Or...
Well, it's not snow on a day that doesn't wind.
Right.
Come on, come on.
So, if we did like an 8:30 on Monday or Tuesday?
Yep, that's fine.
Okay? Do you have a preference for days?
Ah, hell, I just have, I just will be without an assistant for three days next week. So, Tuesday or Wednesday would work for me.
Tuesdays, I think, are better. I mean, just because, you know, Monday, if you have a crisis, you come in, whatever, you've got some time to take care of it, whatever it is.
8:30 Tuesday morning?
Tuesday. 8:30.
Here?
Yeah. Yes.
In this space?
At the town hall?
Yes.
Upstairs.
I still have a question about, are we going to set up some kind of a timeline for this? Can you guys get this done? I just, I feel like if you have that, you know, generous or something, we need to move at least, they have a focus point, let's get this done by this time.
What are you saying exactly? To get what done, at what time?
That's what I'm like, I don't know how.
Well, so, like...
Maybe after the committee's first meeting, they can say, "We can get this done in so much time." Because I don't know how long, you know, they...
Well, you can have the advertising figured out by next time. We can't tell you that, yeah, within two months, we'll have a town manager.
No, no, I'm not talking about the town manager. I'm talking about getting us, getting, you know, exactly how we're going to go about this. Because it sounds like...
That's a good point.
By then, by next select board meeting, we should be able to have a clear, concise path on...
Right, and go...
I can tell you we have one applicant.
Why don't we get one meeting of the committee under advisement, have you guys report back to the next meeting, and then we can think about that timeline to meet your expectation of, in urgency. I agree with you completely. And that way, at least you guys have all met, you'll have some direction, you'll have the chairman and everything set up, and then we can set a timeline.
I agree with you.
And then set a timeline.
We'll determine it ourselves.
There's a play on weekly, and then if we don't need them ready, we can warn it.
All right.
An applicant already for this job? Bring it. Bring it.
You have it too.
I do? Didn't see it.
One of the previous, I'll email it. I just talked to him today, so it's new. Moving along. So, list of appointments. First draft. The list of appointments. These little things, little things. How much time do we want to spend on this?
You don't have to spend any time on it. I think you should, this should be looked at and considered, people need to be asked.
Right.
Yeah.
So, this is just for info?
Info.
We filled in, obviously, chair of select board, the clerk. There's vacant things. So, if you know anybody?
I think we could table those decisions for a month from now. Agreed. We're barred.
Yep, thank you. All right. Moving on to new business, the Hazard Mitigation Plan Survey from the Wyndham Regional Commission. I don't know anything about this, I'll be honest.
I didn't even put on this.
Oh, it has to be done.
Yeah, that's what we have to do.
Did you get the front part of the paperwork?
Yes.
So... It's the questions at the bottom, I think.
Yeah, so we, which this...
Chuck, do I have to look at this? If questions need to be answered, and then...
So, I don't know, this felt like longer than a five-minute conversation to me.
Sorry.
What's the deadline on it?
April 28.
So, you're good. Check it out.
Right, because some of these questions, I feel like are not five-minute questions. You know, they said we could have a 10-minute discussion during a select board meeting. But I don't know how everybody else feels about that, and also, one of the questions is, "How does the town city get information about roads, about the needs and interests of its frontline community members? Please describe any opportunities for engagement offered specifically for frontline community members that you currently provide or that you want to provide if resources are available. What have you already done to prepare for significant weather events in your community and protect residents from natural hazard impacts? What do you need to make that happen? What funding do you need?" This seems like a long conversation. Yes, Jim?
I would suggest if you look at the Hazard Mitigation Plan that was adopted last time...
It's all in there.
Most of what you're asking here, they had to review last time?
Correct.
And answer those questions, and it'll be in there. And there will also be a description of the process, and I think when the regional commission staff coordinated a meeting, pulled the people together and having that brainstorming session to answer those questions anew. But it's not all new ground to tread.
So, it could be a 10-minute conversation if we...
Marko, you and Ross, I went side down and came up with a lot of this.
So, if we table this till the next meeting, it could potentially be 10 minutes.
Reviewer Kirk has your mitigation plan, and you'll be able to answer most of that. So, yeah, someone's just got to do those steps.
Can we have our current plan in front of us?
Yes.
It's 80 pages, so...
Well, that's the 80 page.
Yeah, but it's easy.
Well, no, no, that's a different 80-page one, Stephen. I'll email it to you.
Yes, I can do it next day.
I can do that. Okay. So, I'll table that so that you guys can review it, all right?
Thank you.
A lot of those steps are feeding a boilerplate that you'll find answers everywhere. Quite simple.
All right. Managers report.
Don't have a whole lot, just, I had given you the, in your, in your packet, the finances. It's nothing to make any decisions on, it's just for your information. That's as of today. That's as of you folks signing the warrants and paying out the FIA district. Just an FYI for everybody, per the town meeting votes on Article 18 and 19, I think eight that were on Article 18. The sheriff?
18.
Was it 18? Westminster Town Tax Rate will increase by 10 cents per thousand. That's just for an FYI. I was wondering, there's a whole bunch of stuff, Chip was here yesterday for getting some things squared away for us, in the, you know, reconciling and looking at, really looking into our finances, and I would like the board to invite Chip next meeting. We have a bunch of little tiny accounts. Bunch of little tiny accounts, that would be better if we could just get him, he could explain it better to you. It's like back in the, he gave a good example, so back in the day, $5,000 was a lot of money that the Campbell Fund had for someone in need. Nowadays, you can't ask someone's situation in life. You know, they really can't say, "Do you get EBT?" or "Do you, you know, what's your finances?" And $5,000 is not a lot of money in the scheme of things. So, I'd like him to talk to you about, about that, if he could, to kind of move things around so it's a little bit easier.
You find this essential?
We're having, yeah.
Essential, thirty?
Yeah, we have, I'm not going to lose, I think we have 15 or 16 bank statements that come in with a piddly bunny in it. We, I was just able to close the Westminster meets out. I'll be working with the state on the 23rd with that to get that a final closeout. That was sitting with $50,000 in it that we couldn't do anything with, but we had it, let it sit there now to get rid of it. We don't have any other, any other funds like that left.
Is he available for the Wednesday meeting on the 22nd, do you think?
He, he is. I asked him before I asked you folks.
You need a motion? Because he, we do, he's going to charge us the time, right?
Yes, but we're, yes.
So, I'll make a motion?
Sure.
At this time, Plenum Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we invite Mr. Will Sterns of Nemrick to come and address the board, along with the town manager regarding... Sweethearting funds and fund placement on Wednesday, March 22, 2023.
I'll second that.
Motion has been made and seconded to invite Chip Sterns to come and discuss our small funds on the next...
I think if you had, if you had major questions about what you're looking at today, he'd be able to answer those.
Excellent.
Yes.
Absolutely. And is there a thought that we might be able to consolidate some of those little tiny funds?
Yes, that's that.
Make them go away?
Yes, that's what he's trying, that, I think he had to take, when he was at Rockingham, they had to go through probate.
Yeah, yeah.
Some of them were probably allocated.
Yes, so it's, I think he can walk us through that.
Great.
Motion's made and seconded. Further discussion?
Who's in charge of the community fund?
We have trustees that was voted on. I think one of them that was, that was on voted on yesterday, Pete Harrison is one that's on, but I think Barb Taylor ran, and I think Nancy Dalzell's on it as well.
Should they also be involved in the conversation?
Did I specifically say the Campbell Fund? I did?
Yeah.
Oh, well, I don't, okay, sure.
I don't know, I'm just saying for...
No, that's a good idea. It doesn't mean it's going to happen, it's not going to happen overnight, of course, it's just a discussion thrown out there.
So, it's like they, they feel...
But absolutely, they should.
It's important, right?
Yep.
Not what I've deleted.
Good point.
Maybe you're not talking about inviting for the next meeting, but maybe a meeting down the road, those trustees, or is that what you're talking about?
I, this was just going to start a discussion, but if you want me to invite them, I'll absolutely let them know to be here.
I think if we're going to discuss the Campbell Fund, they probably ought to be...
Yeah, they need to be here.
Yeah.
Yep.
Further discussion?
Aye.
All right, moving on, Road Foreman's report.
Thank you, Alan.
You're welcome.
And thank you for all the work you did down home, you and Chip. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, this last storm was pretty challenging, as going on roads are soft, it was wet, heavy snow, we lost a lot of gravel, unfortunately, and we're going to steal line digits, so. Truck number six went to ATG after that storm, the check engine light on, the DNF pump went down, that should be covered under warranty. Truck number one had several check engine light, the ABS light was on, turns out it's an ABS sensor, it is out of warranty, that'll be a $1,000 bill. Truck number five was due for a freight job, we did that in-house, that was a complete rotors, calipers, pads, the old nine yards. So, that wasn't cheap either. The alternator on load one decided to go out also, all in the same storm, which we replaced in-house. Corey Noyes went to Rutland for a three-day welding course that was state-funded, which covered stick welding, mid-welding, and gas welding, and use of torches. So, now we've got one more guy that I can do that. Jason Benson is also capable, now Corey is also coming up through, so. In the fall, they're supposed to have a follow-up course on the same, same subject, you know, kind of a second prerequisite, whatever, I don't know what I'm saying, prerequisite, but, yeah, anyway. So, we'll send them to that when it comes to the others. We have Bellows Falls' asphalt trailer, it's a heated trailer that will be going around, continuing to do cold catching, keeps it warm, so it actually is effective. What else? We moved the break room from downstairs to storage over the top of the offices, just empty space. So, Streer came in, put up walls, and we moved the break room upstairs so that we can move the office over, because the more office stuff we're doing now, we're taking on a lot more responsibility, we need more room. We don't even have room for a copier or printer right now, where, so, yeah, so that's where we found the space, and we've got the money in the garage fund right now, so that's where we got that from. Paving bins are due in tomorrow at noon. Gate Street, Church Avenue, Oak Hill, Alden Street, and Ground Avenue are up for paving this year. We've notified the Aqueduct Society about Ground Avenue in hopes that they will seek funding to do what I need to do to update their water line, because that entire street will be taken back to dirt and totally reshaped. I don't know if you guys are familiar with it, but it collects water, so there's no, it's poor drainage.
Tropuses?
Ground Avenue where the firehouse is?
Yeah, etc.
Yeah. So, we're going to regrade, the firehouse is going to do their parking lot at the same time, so we're going to, whoever gets the bid for the paving is going to work with the fire department, pave that at the same time, work with the parking lot on the other side of the street, because that's higher than the parking lot for the firehouse, so it just creates a big pond. So, we're going to regrade that whole area and get it so it works the way it should. That's about it. Chloride went from 96 cents a gallon to $1.9. I just got that information today, so. Good thing we went up a little bit.
Do you plan on opening up a paving ditch now?
Yes. They do, yeah, so anybody wants to be here.
It's here? You're doing it up here?
Yeah.
I'll have the heat open.
Thanks, thank you. We're used to the heat, sorry.
Any other questions for Chuck? Moving on.
Thanks, Chuck.
I have no reason why we need an executive session, anybody? All right. I had a little note. Stephen, what did you add? Yes, okay. Planting items from town meeting.
Yes, the tasks from town meeting strike, struck me as important and sounded overwhelming. And I guess what I'm looking for, this item, is attempting to, perhaps a list of the, those things we're directed to do from town meeting, and maybe a little clarity for my mind as well. The obvious one was, we now have $120,000, if I remember correctly, to try to get a contract for doing essentially crime prevention, police work, or... or replacing the sheriff's contract.
Yes, I missed it.
Absolutely.
Sorry, Jim.
How about we start thinking inside the box and not out?
Oh, absolutely, yeah, we're just, it's a job we have.
Town in Brannaborough, get leases cruisers, we don't own them. We are a host to the state police barracks, that means free dispatching, many towns that host a state facility, that's us, so there's free dispatching. We actually have a police officer that lives in Cageville, at three thirty-seven Saxon River Road, that would, maybe we could recruit him. And start doing in-house police work, with the budget we have, and stop going outside.
So, so, but we, we, we have, that's just, that job, whether it's in-house, outhouse, or, you know, even out of state, whatever, is something we have to, to do, and actually do quite promptly, I don't know when our current.
Ends June thirty.
June thirty, it's, so sometime well before June thirty, we've got to make a decision on that.
So, we need to have a committee to sit down and figure this out.
Well, what, what, what I'm trying, would like to do in this, in this item of new business, simply get, you know, our town meeting has told us to do what? And so to, to, to answer that brief question, and then get on to, how do we do each one? You know, and that's, you know, that's, there are many good points on those, but there was that, there was the sheriff contract issue, there is, and I don't know whether, to how, how much of a, a big issue it is, but the ambulance coverage issue, whether that is a, an action, I don't know.
I was going to cut in, sorry. So, I spoke with Cole, who had also spoken with whoever's in charge of Golden Cross. So Golden Cross is not going out of business, they didn't want to sign a contract because they were concerned of staffing issues, but they're not going out of business.
But she had, she did tell me that they were considering. They were considering at the time when I called for contracts, she said they didn't know what they were going to do, they might have to close their doors, is what she had told me.
That, okay, so.
Once again.
Conflicting information.
The town to the north of us, that's also part of this, is actively seeking to get rid of them, because the coverage is terrible. So, it's like usual, we all just went out to eat, and I'm going out with yours, so who's going to be stuck with the check? We are. So it's time to think about, once again, in-house. You have forty volunteers over here, over half of them, I believe, are first A, EMT, whatever, why can't we do our own ambulance service?
So, my personal opinion is, they're already doing like a record number of calls for the size of their department, at some point, you're going to have to start paying those guys.
But they're already going. So instead of running a rescue truck, run the ambulance.
At some point, they're going to stop going. Because they're, they're, they're missing work, they're, at some point, that's, but that's a different topic, different topic, different meeting. So, we'll. Discuss it at some point.
I know, I'm just bringing up ideas, because you have many guys here that can staff an ambulance.
Right.
If we're going to talk ambulance, we really need to include the fiduciary committee and the firehouse, so you can deal with them every single day.
I, I just think, you know. I'm just trying to get a list of what we have to do, not actually to, to finish that sort of discussion, because clearly involves other people, very notably the fire department, and other, and also people, but, so what else was there, I mean, the issue of town garage came up briefly, now we've discussed that, but that would be one of those things. There was the two hundred thousand dollars that was certainly, the voters refused to take back, that goes, that's, that's now in our budget, do we?
No, it's not, it's not.
No, it's not in our budget, no. It stays in FEMA.
It stays in FEMA.
Yeah.
Which is not necessarily bad, it's not going anywhere.
Go ahead.
You just have to have voter approval to use it.
We do have to have voter approval.
We really should have, should have been, it would have been nice if it was clarified
at town meeting, so we could have moved it then, so we either have to have a special meeting, or a, the next town meeting.
There was too many amendments, so it got confused.
I thought they said that the select board could make the decision. I thought they, they didn't say that.
It was, well, it was said, but it wasn't accurate. If it's in a, it's in a fund, it needs voter approval to move it.
So we change that now, so you keep kicking it down the road.
It has to, you have to have a special.
We have to have a special town meeting, or wait a year.
You get, you get five percent of signatures, and you can change anything you want from that happening at that town meeting.
I don't think it's necessarily bad that it's sitting there, other than, because other FEMA money will come in in that, in a, in a period. So then, a year from now, when you've got a big project you want to do, because that's what it was said, that it wanted to be used for, unless I misunderstood, so.
So we've got a year to figure out what we want to do.
Well, my, my only concern is, for years, what we've done is rob money out of the paving budget to buy equipment, and this was before this perk select board, not you guys, but it, it was done since I've been here, and now we are so far behind on paving. Well, you sent me an email today, that you want Paul's fixed, well.
Oh, I, I don't disagree, I don't disagree with you, the fact is, at that meeting, it wasn't, it wasn't, I don't know how to work, it was, we didn't know that because it was in a fund, it didn't go back, it didn't just go back into the general.
No, 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 I understand, we're sitting on it, but. Money that you can't use is the same.
Well, you're not, you have money enough to pay your paving this year, so at next town meeting, you, some, we, the board would make a.
We can make an article to move it into.
Yeah, make us a good recommendation, what you want to do with it.
You just have to have voter approval to move it.
I'd like to have the bridge fund, you got a bridge coming up that you.
It was pretty clear.
I wish I wasn't plowing snow that day.
Yeah, I know you were, it was pretty clear that the people in the town wanted that money to go to you, basically.
Yes.
Well, so, you're one of the problems, you're just going to tell us how you want to do it.
We got to do it.
Okay, alright.
It was clear to go towards roads, bridges, gravel.
Infrastructure was, was.
Very clear what they wanted it used for, whether it passed or not.
Which was good. The enthusiasm of the town and appreciation of, of money being usefully spent, according to structure.
If you wanted to use it for something else, I think we would be going against voter approval for sure.
Absolutely.
Alright, so.
Oh, I just had one other thing to touch on, sheriff, when we talked about sheriffs, Ally and I got an email from Mark today. That I can either meet with him, or you can as a sheriff, I don't, it doesn't matter to me, but that he disputes things that were said at town meeting, and the town's feelings and wants to meet. It was Ally, myself, and him, so it could be Ally knew, I don't, it doesn't matter to me.
He can dispute it all he wants, I called him, they didn't come, they didn't follow.
No, no, I agree, I'm just.
He can dispute it all he wants.
I'm just trying to be transparent, he did respond back, he's not, he doesn't agree with our take on the situation, so.
Right.
At some point in the future, near future, we'll have, somebody will have that discussion.
Do we want to invite him to a select board meeting again?
I make a motion to invite, given his comments today, mainly, I just, I make a motion to invite Sheriff Anderson to our meeting on Wednesday, March twenty second, or any meeting thereafter that is up for his prompted convenience to be here.
I'll, I'll second that.
Motion has been made and seconded to invite Sheriff Mark Anderson to the next select board meeting, or the most convenient for him, I guess.
I would, I would comment on that. Given the, the sentiment at town meeting, and your statement, Ally, I'm wondering whether, because we're, we're considering alternatives, whether it might be best to have the, the, a conversation with the sheriff, when the, a group has met to discuss, you know, what are the alternatives, and maybe is, are, are there other bids? And, so, so that, so that he's coming to us, not with us having no alternative to him, but to have, you know, him being a essentially competitive bid, or at least a, a competitive contract, with other alternatives that we might have. So we're not feeling like we're, we're assessing his presentation that night in isolation, because it does sound like there are other ways to get that job done, and we may want to have each person advocate for, for, for their offer to get it done, and have, and have that decision process in a meeting, as opposed to giving him that head start. That's my thought.
No, it's a good thought, but just, just to show you there, I mean, we've had Sheriff Anderson here multiple times, he did reach out, but today he wants to certainly correct the record, want to give him the opportunity to do that, or at least put himself on the record, since he was the president at town meeting. The other thing, too, is, as everyone here can attest to, especially for our new members, you know, we've, he's been here quite a few times, and we've gone over this roadmap, we do have a, we do have a contract, I appreciate what you're saying, I don't think in any way prejudice is him, or gives him a disadvantage over, if we decide to go on alternative route with your excellent suggestions and those type of things, I think at least have him to come, and we can go over the current contract, and he can clarify, again, for, especially for, for you two guys, exactly what his position is, it won't change anything, I'm just saying it would be good to have him here to address his concerns.
Yeah, I would think, he knows that we're, 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 town's upset, and we're just throwing a whole lot more money their way, and so I think they're going to be a little more competitive.
It is not specifically their way.
Right, well, no, we, we could, okay, let's get, we could throw more money, we budgeted more money, they may be a little hungrier, and they may be more willing to work.
That's what I think sparks the interest for him to come now, is he saw the dollars.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure it is.
Hundred percent.
It sure is, absolutely.
Otherwise, he didn't get two weeks when it was town meeting day, he should have shown up to present himself.
So here's the other side of that coin, is that, you know, we weren't giving him a lot of money, he was going to, they're probably spending their time, well, this town given us a lot of money, we're going to be over there, not over here, now, whoa, they're going to look, so that's, you know, that may, may not be true.
We were paying them quite considerably, considerably more money.
We were, and they still weren't getting it.
And they, we still weren't getting the services, so.
So there you go.
So there you go.
You're contracted for a specific number of hours a week, you don't expect them.
We're, we're a hundred and three hours a month, and when I gave the report at town meeting, it wasn't even close. It wasn't even close.
So, his presence doesn't change, doesn't change all of.
He technically owes us, he technically owes us.
His presence to express, explain himself doesn't change all the credit history.
No, he, he can, he can address the concern that what he doesn't feel is true at, was said at town meeting, whether it is or not, he can address it, and they won't, too, we have till, till June to figure out. I mean, I don't drive my feet till June, but.
That's going to be like a year.
Let, let him answer it, and he can answer in front of everybody, instead of just three people downstairs, I think that's probably a better plan.
I agree. Motion on the floor.
If the. The motion was about the having him come.
And discussion.
Oh, I was just getting back to, is there anything else in that, under that?
We'll get there. So, motion's been made and seconded to invite Mark Anderson to our next select board meeting.
Or another meeting? Yeah, it's more convenient.
Yes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Alright, continuing.
On the, just on the six E item, about what did we get, what, what task do we get out of town meeting? Sheriff, ambulance, town garage. But hire manager, clearly, are, was there anything else that needs to be on top of our agenda straight from town meeting? Does that cover it?
That covers.
It seems substantial, but.
Right. The voters did recommend that we adopt a declaration of inclusion, but it is not emergent.
Yes, so that, that could be sort of sometime. That's what, that came up in the end.
And I think that's it, I think those were all the items.
Yes, I guess I, I was thinking that there was one other little thing, that's the other little thing, or little bit.
Anything else? Alright. Moving on. Boards, committees, and commissions. Other business. Alright, seeing none, the date of the next meeting is Wednesday, March twenty second, two thousand twenty-three.
Motion to adjourn, I'm sure.
Motion has been made and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.